Hey everybody, on this edition of Po Community, I'm welcoming Eric Minty, who is running in the upcoming municipal election for the city of Porcoquillum. We talk about why he's doing it and what drove him to do it. I'm sitting here with Eric Minty. How's it going, man?
Good, how are you?
Very good. Yeah, tell us a little bit about yourself. You're a member here at the Fountainhead.
Yes, I am.
So obviously you know the benefits of coworking, right?
Yes, that's true. And so I guess, you know, start about what brought me here to the Fountainhead to begin with. And but there's more to the story than that. And you might find this kind of interesting because I look at coworking spaces as as an important sustainability aspect of our of city living, which many people probably don't consider. But I came here to to kind of get out of the home office because I've been working on a startup, which is it's it's a it's a data analytics software for behavior analysis professionals that work with autistic children. So it's really very specific. And that's not where you're really going to see the benefit of the, you know, a coworking space like this, right? Where the people that I work with, you know, the people that you, you know, meet on a daily basis here, you know, at, you know, at a space like this, they're not going to be people that I can connect with on, you know, on a business-to-business relationship type of thing because a lot of people are here for that. But they are people that can, you know, you know, that can help with sort of the audio, the recording, or, you know, doing podcasts like this. And but but it also it gets me out of that home office space, you know, and and that's I find that really valuable as kind of a startup entrepreneur, just to get out of that, you know, to get out of that space and to to meet and talk with other people and socialize. It's really good for the mental health. But it also is a kind of a side interest for me as well because, well, you know, and and so your viewers are about to know that I'm planning on running for city council in Porcoquillum. And there's there's two really main aspects of why I want to run and the kinds of things that I hope to accomplish. One of them is sustainability, and that's that's a big word. It encompasses, you know, of course, everyone's concerned about climate action and things like that. And how that affects, you know, equity and the most vulnerable people in our community. There's a lot of topics to do with sustainability. But and and another part of it is is transparency and, you know, having more open government, having more dialogue with, you know, citizens like, you know, open town halls and things like that. Because I feel like a lot of people and I've talked to a lot of people who feel very cut off from what's happening at City Hall. They really don't know what's going on. They don't feel like they get very good information. And even if they do have info sessions or they have the ability to, you know, to input, you know, their thoughts and surveys and things like that, it's really insufficient. And people just don't have that, you know, that that in public engagement that gets people interested. It gets people interested in local government. I mean, how like, that's kind of one of those things where you're crazy about being interested in local government, but it's really important, especially coming back to things like sustainability and climate change. That's where the big, you know, that's where the big impacts are going to be. But I and and we wanted to talk about this was how are coworking spaces related to sustainability? And of course, we've all been through COVID. We all sort of know the story there. And that was a big shift to working from home for a lot of people. And what we realized through this pandemic was working from home is great. You're going to save on your commuting costs and your time and and things like that. I was able to go, I was able to completely go carless, right? So, you know, I walk here to the Fountainhead or I rode my bike today, which is fantastic. It's a it's a it's it's a close enough space to my home. If you're working from your home office, obviously the commute is just like down the stairs or whatever, right? It's really nice. But a lot of people are finding that, okay, we're moving back into this this hybrid work model or working in the office. But a lot of people are resistant, a lot of people are resisting that because they said, well, you know, my office is so far away or I've moved out away from the city. Right? A lot of people have moved out here from Vancouver because you get, you know, it's it's more affordable, you get more space. And hey, if I can work remotely, that's great. Now they're finding they can't always work remotely because you're expected to be, you're expected to be in the office. So there's an opportunity here for coworking spaces that can sort of bridge that gap and be in the middle of having, you know, that space away from your home environment where you've got all those distractions. And 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 kind of a compromise between that and being in the office. But you've got other people around you that are not necessarily your peers or the people that you work with. But you can network with people that you wouldn't otherwise interact with on a daily basis because there's all kinds of different people. You know, people here from, you know, from from different companies, different organizations, entrepreneurs, whether you have real estate agents or, you know, like you guys here doing the podcast and the audio video recording. And that's really important for startup businesses. But it gives you a different perspective on things. So I learn a lot every time I come here.
Yeah, no, it's 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 a hub for pretty much everything you need essentially. And that's what we're trying to build here. You have entrepreneurs from all different industries that can work with one another and just build relationships with one another because.
You get out of that, you get out of your headspace, right? Out of the home office, but it's it's an opportunity as well to like, so you can have it within your own community. And and you don't necessarily need to like, a lot of that collaboration that you get. And 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 I get a lot of really good collaboration with people here that they're not part of my business, but you still learn from them.
Yeah. And you brought up the fact like, oh, almost like local government, like a lot of people don't get involved because it's almost like Nishi where they don't think they can, like a lot of people don't go to these.
Do you drive on roads?
Yeah.
Do you have a home? Do you have like, you know, it's but it's it's most people don't interact with City Hall on a regular basis. But when you do need to interact with City Hall, you expect that to be a positive relationship and you don't expect it to get in the way. And 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 for the most part, I think it 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 does do that and it serves fairly well. I mean, we're pretty lucky. We have, you know, we have, you know, in in Porcoquillum is like, well, I mean, I I moved here specifically like 25 years ago. I chose this place because I knew it was a really good community and a place to, you know, raise kids. It's like it's an urban environment, but it's, I mean, it is an urban city, right? Obviously, but it's you still have that kind of small town charm and you still like you're you're close to nature and the trails and everything. It's just really help. It's really important, you know, for for mental health and, you know, for myself, especially if you're working in a high-stress job, you want that space. You want that, you know, that access to, you know, we've got the trails. It just goes right outside my house, pretty much.
Yeah.
And and those are really important aspects and be able to build family and community. So there's a lot, there's a lot to this community. I call it's like one of the best kept secrets of the Lower Mainland, right? You know, so it's like, don't tell anyone, but we are.
Yeah, no, Poco has always, it's kind of just been about its community. It's all the tri-cities in general, I find are quite good to their, their people, their citizens.
Well, I like that. There's just kind of the resistance to like rapid densification, you know, those towers and and that you see in some places like, and I'm not a fan of those, right? But I like that sort of low and and really the mixed use of creating those. There's a concept we have that we call complete communities, right? Where you're where you're not just building residential, right? And we do have, we do have a massive gap in this community. We're still a bedroom community, right? We still, I think, the ratio of the ratio of workers to jobs is like four to one or five to one. It's somewhere in that range. The last, the last data that I had was, I think, from 2012 or something. So it's a little out of date, but I don't think it's changed much. So it's still in that, it's it's still too high, right? So what it means is that four out of five workers have to leave the city to to do their job, right? So coworking spaces can help bridge that gap, right? And we need more businesses in our, you know, in our community centers, whether it's, you know, downtown or like Coast and Prairie is one, Fremont is Fremont is booming, right? It's it's crazy. It's awesome, right?
Yeah.
And lots of different places there. So we need more spaces like this. That's just one aspect of it, right?
Yeah, one of the main reasons we opened up out here is because of that. Except for with our media niche especially, I went to school for music production, always kind of been involved in arts. And if you wanted to go to a professional studio or just work with people within media, it's all downtown. It just seemed like you always had to go downtown. And what do we know about downtown? Expensive, expensive, expensive. What do we know about students don't have money? So it's like, what we have something here, something that's local, something that people within like these niche industries or you just with ideas, like this is a place for students too. It's always nice to have somewhere to go do your work, your homework, your studies, like.
And it's and it's flexible and it's opening. It's a welcoming space. And and so, I mean, hats off to you guys. You guys have created this great space here, which is like, I really enjoy every time that I come here, so.
And it's different, it's different ideologies, different opinions. It's healthy.
Of course, yeah. There's different spaces for everybody, right?
Yeah.
And there's so there's going to be a variety of different coworking spaces. You guys have, you know, this thing that you do and you, you know, you are what you are and you're a little bit unique. And that works for me. Other people are going to have something else that works for them too.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a family-run aspect where it's more accepting and just realizing that everybody can be a community, but everybody doesn't have to be the exact same.
Exactly. Yeah, because we're all very different people, right?
Yeah, yeah. Because, you know, everybody kind of gets into their own heads. And when you're usually, you tend to flock to people with similar ideologies, similar just things that they like in life.
You get in this echo, you get, yeah, you get in this echo chamber, right? Where it's like the same idea circulating around and you don't get anything new, right? And and here you come up with totally different perspectives, like even, you know, I mean, there's a there's a very wide range of political opinions in this lunchroom, right?
It's like a real-life algorithm. I find that like.
That's a good way of looking at it.
It's just like, okay, you're okay with, you're interested in this and you have more conversations about it. It's it's, I don't know, I find that when you're when you're stuck to your ways or stuck to just what you think and you're with those people, you're you're stuck in it like a real-life al- algorithm, where you think that's how the whole world is thinking. And it's and it's 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 very actually just like unhealthy. When you think that everybody has the same opinion as you.
Right, yeah. And and I mean, you and I can be very different people, but we can still, you know, like, we can still see each other as human beings. And and respect each other and and you know, we may, we may have differences of opinion. That's okay. We may have different hobbies. That's okay. But like, you know, we can still respect each other and like each other and, you know, hang out and and have a good conversation.
Yeah. So what made you want to decide for city council?
Oh, boy.
It's a lot of work. We all know like anything.
No, it is a lot of work. And and there's there's layers to that answer. And I think what I'm gonna, I, what I think what I'm gonna do with is, where am I going to go with that question? I think I've just reached a time in my life where I feel it's appropriate for me to, this is going to sound cliche, but to give back to the community. Like, I I mean, I've always done that. As long as I've lived in Poco, I've always, pretty much is, it's really having kids gets you out in the community and doing things, whether it's like volunteering, you know, as a soccer coach or whatever. And and so I've done, I've done a lot of those different, you know, a lot of those different things. I mean, I'm on my Stratocouncil as well. And I I I get such a tremendous sense of joy from doing that. And a lot of people are like, really? You're on your Stratocouncil and you get joy from that? But I do. It's truly. And it's it's being of service to your community. And that's really the only way to describe it. It's like, it is a joyful experience. And the more I talk to, you know, different people and get involved with, you know, get in that headspace of like, what's really going on with the city? And I probably, you know, so far in the campaign, I probably knocked on about a thousand doors and had a lot of conversations with people. And really just listening to what people have to say. And what it does, like, I have a passion for that. And I just, like, you 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 see all the good things about the community, but then you see all the problems and the things. And and I'm an engineer by, you know, by training and by profession and 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 a project manager. So I'm very much like, you see the problems, you focus on the problems and you come up with solutions and then you implement them in a structured and methodical way. And that's, that's how I'm sort of trained to see the world. But the world doesn't necessarily always work that way. And some of the solutions, the paths can get messy. And so it's, but that's really exciting. That in that messiness is is where that that human interaction comes in. Where you're like, there's an opportunity for me to really make lives better, to make. And I've I've got this sort of campaign slogan, if you will, I I call it livable city, lovable city. And so that livability is, it goes towards, you know, obviously sustainability, but, you know, ensuring that we have that 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 joyful place to live as part of the city and that we're building that city in a way that that accommodates everyone. And and, you know, that we're not just, you know, catering to special interests or, you know, just being one-dimensional in terms of, like, if we just focused on housing, for example, and, you know, building housing density and that. Yes, we need to do that. But at the same time, like for every hundred residents, for every hundred new residents that we, you know, bring into the city, we need 200 new jobs to get past that, you know, that that four to one, five to one ratio that I was talking about. That's the way we're going to do that by being very deliberate about that. Right? So that's kind of, you know, the the structural way that you deal with that. That's my problem-solving side. But then my human side says, what is that going to mean to people on an emotional level? It means, hey, I'm not going to have to drive to work. What is that going to save me? Is it going to save me, you know, eight to 10 hours a week? That's not getting my life back.
Yeah, not not to mention the money.
You know, and the cost, right? I mean, the cost as well, right? People talk about the cost of housing. Let's just talk about the cost of living. The cost of living is going up. Whether it's food and it's gas and it's, you know, like cars aren't getting any cheaper, right? So I mean, that was partly from a cost perspective, but partly an experimental perspective, why I decided I wanted to go carless and just try it out. And there's some pretty dodgy places for riding your bike around the city. I'm not going to lie. But I mean, there is progress being made on it. And, you know, I've talked to some really smart people in the city and they know what to do. And and, you know, and and so to add a little bit more political will to some of those conversations, if I can be a part of that and, you know, you know, make some convincing arguments for for some things that will be of long-term use and value to the city and, you know, the people in this city. What what could be more rewarding than that?
Yeah, and I, you said that you you knocked on a bunch of doors. That itself is probably one of the most nerve-wracking things to do because you never know how people react. It's it's definitely.
It's been really positive.
That's good.
Yeah. So you might remember that I was sort of given the tap on the shoulder to to be the emergency candidate for the VC Green Party back a few years ago when we had that snap election, right? And that was, I was way over my head. I didn't know what I was doing, right? But the the interesting thing about that was, we didn't do any door knocking because it was on, it was in the pandemic. But when you're soliciting people for, you know, for nominations and things like that, there was a lot of hostility. A lot of people, like, it was night and day. It was very polarized. People either loved you or hated you, right? And and that was because you're putting on like, and and I and I think that's true of any political party, right? Like, you represent a political party, nobody has a neutral opinion towards most of the political parties. I love them or hate them.
Especially now, it's so tense.
It's so polarized, right? Like, you get that, it's it's that identity politics that's become so toxic, right? And that's what I love about the municipal and campaigning, you know, for for city council. Almost universally, every single person, as soon as I mention, you know, hey, you know, I, you know, I'd like to, you know, I I'd like to serve on city council. Or, you know, I'd be, I'll be seeking election, right? And it's just people, oh, well, that's fantastic. You know, and I like, at first I was shocked. I'm like, really? You're happy? Like, it's just like, I just knocked on your door and I disrupted your day, right? But people enjoy that. And people really, I think they appreciate the fact that it's like, there's, you know, someone coming around and and knocking on my door, right? I've got a lot more to, I'm wearing a hole in my shoes.
Well, I just, I I find it's a very passionate time, whether it be negative or positive energy. It's a very passionate time. You're not, you're and you're either getting like, I could imagine going to doors. You're saying it's very positive, but like, if I didn't ask you that question, I'd see it being you got a lot of people that are passionate are going to tell you how they feel.
They certainly do.
Or there's going to be people that are been really quiet and just like, they don't think anything will ever come of their opinion. Or when they have concerns, they think if they voice them, it doesn't amount to nothing. And I think you're seeing that on a federal level, especially right now, where it's just, no, people not getting their questions answered.
You hit it exactly right. That's that. And that's where it comes back to that transparency part, right? Because people just don't know what's going on at at City Hall or, you know, in in Parliament or wherever it is, or whatever level of government it is that you care about. And of course, I'm very passionate about, you know, what's happening in Poco, right? So the municipal affairs, that's really important to me. And but people just don't really have any idea how it works. And it's really complicated to try to get to to understand all the, you know, processes and all the, you know, because there's a lot of bureaucracy involved at any level of government anywhere, right? And and people just get lost. They don't know how to navigate it and they give up, right? And and that's that's unfortunate, right? So adding a little bit of transparency, like one of the things I like, I went out to the, what did they have? The Public Works. They had an open house, you know, a few weeks ago and went out there and start, you know, talked to a number of different people there, not just the city, but, you know, some other like nonprofit organizations. And learned about groups that I didn't even know existed, which was fantastic. We should be doing more of that, make it more interactive and you know, it's fun for the kids. They get to play on the fire trucks and, you know, spray the hoses and stuff, right? Which is, which is kind of neat. But we we can, we can do more things like if we did that on a regular basis, right? Like, is what I was saying before we started this podcast is, you know, you do this podcast, you do it on a regular basis. And it's like, something, you just do something and you do it over and over again and do it really well. And now you've got something that's gold, that's valuable. And and you learn to execute that really well. So this is something I think we can do with the city rather than, you know, when was the last time we had a town hall, right? Covid was, you know, Covid was Covid, so it made things difficult. But we're just not in the habit of doing that consistently and listening to people, right? You can, you can stand in a room and and talk to a group of 200 people and, you know, give them a bunch of information, but that's not adding a lot of value. It's adding some. You're going to get the real value when they have those, you know, have those interactive sessions, right? That's and we need to do more of those so that people know what's happening in their community, tailored to their community and their, because we have multiple communities around here, right? So what's happening in their neighborhood? And every every neighborhood in the city has a completely different set of concerns.
Yeah, 100%. And I I think what's nice about municipal government is I think it's one of the only governments left that the the old rule is that the people are supposed to have power over their government the other way around. I feel on a municipal level is the only place where people like citizens get their points across and actually their voices are heard when they contact a city hall.
To a much larger extent. And I think Poco is still, we're still small enough that you have that opportunity to have your voice heard. When you get to, you know, bigger cities and that, your your voice gets lost in the noise because they become too big and, you know, too unwieldy and you lose that representation. And it's especially like, it's really hard to make that connection even at the provincial level and especially at the federal level. And it's not, I'm not knocking, you know, the the efforts that, you know, our MPs or MLAs are making, right? But they've got such a wide scope of concern that they can't be in touch with, you know, the men on the street, right?
Yeah, it's just like, if you, if you're, if you pay attention to federal politics, you see that the MPs from local areas have like, traveling to Ottawa constantly, meetings, either at the House of Commons and everything. When you're municipal, you can really concentrate staying home and building your own community and making it better. Which is, I I think if I were to ever want to get involved in politics, not saying I'd ever want to be, that's something I can understand why that's somewhere you'd want to go is municipal, just because, yeah, there is.
Hey, five years ago, I didn't imagine I'd be doing this. So you never know, right?
And anyway, you said two years ago with that snap election or whatever, you all of a sudden you're thrown into, that was technically, that was a federal election, right?
It was provincial.
Oh, it was provincial?
Provincial, yeah.
Well, because there was.
There was also a federal election too, yeah.
So that was for provincial and that's that's just huge. It's it's being thrown into something pretty massive, right?
You got it, yeah.
So like, when does this whole election go down?
So the the election date is October 15th and there will be advance voting and things like that. So I mean, there will be, there should be plenty of information that comes out in terms of, you know, you know, where and when to vote. And you should be getting your voter registration card. If, I think you have to be a Canadian citizen and a VC resident. And obviously to vote in in Poco, you have to be a resident of Porcoquillum. So that's a good reason to move if you moved to Poco.
Or just make our address yours.
No, I don't think that's allowed.
No, maybe not.
Yeah. So and I think we're also doing mail-in ballots this year. And so there's, there's, there's really no excuse for not voting unless you just don't know who to vote for, right? So and that's, so that's my job. That's on me to make sure that everybody knows who I am and and what I stand for.
Yeah, because that's a, that's a huge thing is, everybody always knows when the big elections are going on, a lot of people. It's not, it's one of those things like, it's people need to know that their voices can be heard and people need to know when things are happening. I think it's the general public is so caught up in such big stuff going on that they don't really pay attention to the actual stuff that can change their lives. Like, they're paying attention to things that really they have no control of at that situation.
Right, yeah. And isn't it always the case? It's the things that don't have such a direct impact on our lives that are the most interesting to us. And the things that do impact us, maybe that's just too hard. Maybe we're too close to it. Or maybe we just don't know what impact or or how to make an impact. So because it isn't, it isn't easy.
Yeah, I know. It's not easy at all. So what are your major, like, what is your major?
How do you address homelessness? Come on.
It's like, yeah, and there's never the right answer. It's, it's, there's so many answers and there's so many ways of doing things. And there's always going to be somebody angry with the way you're doing.
There there isn't always a right answer, but there's a, but there's often a right question. And how you ask the question, right? So I mean, I stumbled on homelessness, right? So, you know, that topic, obviously a huge topic. Nobody has, nobody really has all the answers.
No.
But start by asking the question from a place of compassion and you'll go a long ways.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, 100%. And I think it's, it's really easy to come to a quick judgmental state in today's times. People are very, very judgmental of one another. And it's stereotypes are a real thing. Like, people definitely don't listen to people. There's there's stereotypes that they like put up their their shades, they.
You know, as part of this process, I've and 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 I'm not perfect, but I've learned to listen. I've learned the importance of listening and it's a, it's a skill that we all, I think everybody could stand to develop more. Just listen to one another. We can go a lot, we can go a long ways that way.
Yeah, we have the Bob Marley quote on our wall that's like, freedom of speech carries with it the freedom to listen. And that is.
It's a responsibility.
It's a responsibility and it's and it's the only way I think perspectives can actually change. If somebody has a bad perspective or a bad opinion on something, if it's actually just because they're raised a certain way, that's just been embedded in their brain. The only way you're going to get through to them is have a, like a, just a nice conversation, like a respectful conversation with one another about it.
The best way to, the best way to change someone's opinion is to agree with them.
Yeah. Or just not call them an idiot. Like, this is the problem with today's world. Straight up, today's world is this, it's this, you're either here or here.
We're all, we're all idiots.
And and you, and you're gonna, the first thing you do is like, oh, you're this, you call them names. You're, no one, when they're in the fence, the fence mode, is going to be like, I'm going to listen to you now. So what people need to really do is no matter how different you are, listen to the perspective. Don't have to agree. But you you listen, you gave it a chance. And that that's totally lost in this world, right?
So it's the more different your perspectives are, the more important it is to listen.
Yeah, yeah, 100%. What are your biggest, like, what's, what drove you to become part of city council? Like, what is, what do you want to change? Obviously, you said, I know you, the bike paths, you said, are pretty rough around here.
How much time have we got?
Well, we got about five more minutes.
So I, like, I mean, I, a lot of my peers and my networks and everything else is all, a lot of the focus is around, you know, around what I would call practical climate action. And and I definitely have a, you know, a passion for, you know, for everything related to it. And it touches everything that we do, which, and and that is mitigation strategies, but also adaptation strategies that, you know, that have that equity built in so that we're not leaving people behind, right? So that's a whole, that's a whole category of things. And I spend a lot of time in that space. And I was recently elected to the Board of Directors for the West Coast Climate Action Network. Just just one of the, you know, one of the things that I'm involved with. But where, at the heart, what really drives me, where I really want to make a difference, is furthering, is advancing this great 3,000-year-old experiment, 2,600-year-old experiment called democracy. That's something I've always been passionate about. And democracy's gotten a bad rap over the years, right? Like, and and it does, like, I've, I've even traveled to Greece to go and stand at the place where the democracy first started, where they had that assembly and the speaker's stone and everything. And and they have, you know, etched in the stone, it says, who wishes to speak? So it's in ancient Greek, obviously, but who wishes to speak? And that's an invitation to the conversation. And that's where it starts. So you had the whole assembly. And what's missing from our modern democracy, in my opinion, and the root of the disenfranchisement that you see is we, what we're missing is that informed and educated populace. So we've got voting down, we've got voting systems down pat, and we've got parties and everything else. And, you know, in some places we have, you know, different systems of, you know, voting and proportional representation or not, or first past the post. You got all those debates going on. That's all focusing on voting, who you vote for, right? But what's really important is the conversations you have between the elections. That's where the real democracy happens. The voting is not the democracy. The vote, that's, that's, that's the superficial side of it. The heart of democracy is those conversations that happen between the elections. That's the real meat of it. That's people talking to people and solving problems and working them out. And that's consensus building and doing all those things. That's where the real passion lies. And that's what, you know, that's, I think, where the leadership is, where where we need that leadership. And that's how you build community. So that's really, if if you, if you tell me what I really want to accomplish, that's really where I want to accomplish some, some change. And I see that, right? And this is the, I think, it's like the perfect, it's like, it's like the perfect canvas to do that, you know?
Yeah, and that's, I I see your passion, man. So like, that's what, it's like passionate, passion for your community and passion to help your community out. And because we're politics has kind of gotten away from, it's more just, it's kind of to one-up your, one-up your opponent more than it is to actually.
That's the visible part of it. There's a lot of people involved. I would even say the majority of people that get involved in politics come at it from that perspective of wanting to make a difference in their community. And it's in in in, and not not faulting the media, the media is going to focus. And it's like in, 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 and not, not faulting the media, the media is gonna focus on the things that are interesting to people, right?
Yeah.
What's interesting is, you know, oh, like I got a hand with, you know, his hand caught in the cookie jar type of thing, right?
Yeah.
You know, uh, you know, or the thing like, oh, I disagree with this and people going, you know, off and, and, you know, getting all bothered about whatever. The latest scandal or disagreement or, you know. Toxic standoff is whatever. That's, that's, that's what makes news headlines.
Yeah.
Because that's what people are gonna read, right?
Yeah.
But the day-to-day business is, um. That's, that's where the, that's where the real important work is.
Yeah. Well, Eric, um, like, I, I support you. I think it's cool. I like, I've gotten to know you more and more, um, since you've been here. Outspoken about what you, what you believe in, but that's good. You, you have passion about you, you, what you, what you care about and what you want change for. Um, so yeah, like I, I want our viewers to know, like, where they can find out more information about your, your running and, and the election. So like, where can they find you? What's your website and everything?
Yeah, I've, I've put up a website for the election. It's, uh, Minty, M-I-N-T-Y and the number four, Poco, P-O-C-O dot C-A. Uh, and I've got social media links and, and, you know, all kinds of stuff and, uh. You, I mean, you can also send me an email. Like I love getting emails from people and telling me if they agree, disagree, or they think I'm an idiot or whatever. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
And that's Eric, E-R-I-K, at MintyforPoco.ca.
Cool. And yeah, I, I know, like I've talked to you, we've had conversations with one another. I know for a fact that like when people, if they have, have something they wanna ask you about, you will be the one of, one of those, uh.
I get back to you.
Yeah, you'll get back to them. And that's, that's a huge thing that not many people do. Uh, it's, they, they, they will get back to the people that are complimenting them. But the people that might be asking the difficult questions, somehow those get lost, you know?
Well, those are the only way, that's your opportunity to learn something.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And, and that's how you get better at your job.
Of course.
Dealing with problems, right?
Of course.
But yeah, Eric, I appreciate you being on, um.
Thank you for having me.
Uh, like, maybe we'll do it again sometime closer to the election. I'd like to, obviously we're in Poco.
That would be fun.
If there's something more Poco election-based out of here, I definitely maybe.
There is, there is the, uh, the Poco, the Poco Candidates Tri-Cities Chamber of Commerce, uh, debates. It was October second or third. Uh, there was an article recently in the Tri-City News, so.
Cool.
Uh, they talked about that. But you can go onto the Tri-Cities Chamber of Commerce, uh, website as well and they've got, uh, uh, they're doing that. That's always, that's gonna be fun.
Awesome, Eric. Well, thank you and thank you everybody for watching another edition of Poco Community.